Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Hilton Head Island Gulligichi Land and Cultural Preservation Task Force Special Meeting. This is August 24, 2020. The meeting is being conducted virtually in accordance with Town Council Emergency Ordinance 2020-13. It can be viewed live on the Town's Public Meeting Facebook page at facebook.com/TownOfHiltonHeadIslandMeetings. Okay, I am officially calling the meeting to order. Sharice, I will lean on you to help me with following the script and doing it in this virtual way. I have to say, this is still a bit of a challenge for many of us doing it virtually, but it is good to see those of my task force members who are here and participating on the call. I do thank you for your participation and support. And we also want to welcome the public, and we certainly appreciate our town staff for all they are doing and trying to do. Sharice, are we in compliance with FOIA?
Yes, we are.
Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Stevens?
Present.
Caroline McVitty?
Present.
Joyce Wright? Ms. Wright, are you present?
She's muted.
There we go, she's good.
Hey.
She has her cell.
She's still on mute.
She's muted.
I don't have her muted.
Okay.
Present.
Thank you. Ibrahim Abdul Malik?
Present.
Martha Davis?
Ms. Davis sent me a message earlier that said she was not feeling well, would not be able to attend.
Palmer Simmons?
Present.
Donnie Green? Teresa White?
She was trying to try.
And Todd Theodore?
Present.
Is that it?
That's it, you'll need to approve agenda next.
Okay. We do have an agenda today, and if there are no changes to the agenda, I will accept the motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Thank you so much. The agenda for today, August 24th, is approved. The next item we have on our agenda is citizen comment.
I actually need to call away to make sure that everyone is in compliance with that or in agreement with that.
I'm sorry?
I would need to go through the roll for that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. Ms. McVitty?
Yes, agreed.
Ms. Wright?
Yes, agreed.
Mr. Abdul Malik? Mr. Simmons?
Agreed.
And Ms. Chairman?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Todd.
Yes.
Oh, Todd.
Yeah.
Mr. Theodore, okay. Apologize for that. For citizen comments, public comments concerning today's agenda items were to be submitted electronically via the Town Open Town Hall Portal. The portal closed noon Friday, August 21st, 2020, prior to the scheduled meeting. Two comments were made by the public and were provided to the task force and made a part of the official record. Citizens were provided with the option to sign up for public comment participation by phone during the meeting. The public comment period closed on noon on Friday, August 21st, 2020, prior to the scheduled meeting. There is one request to phone in with public comment, and we will turn to that request after this second item. Thank you.
Were the public comments made available for the public or just to the task force?
They were sent to the task force, but it's on Open Town Hall, which is a public forum.
It can be found there?
It can be found on Open Town Hall, yes.
Okay. Are we going to share those comments?
Those comments, um, they are, I can generalize the comments for that, but they'll be shared after the presentation. I can share it now to say that it's mostly to deal with the home occupation portion, which I'll discuss during the presentation.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, the next item we have is discussion items, revisions to the historic neighborhood preservation overlay district.
Okay, good morning, give me a moment, I need to share my screen. Hey, good afternoon. I'd like to recap the August 6th meeting. There were some comments made by the task force and the community, basically to talk about the feedback that was provided for the first draft of the historic preservation overlay district. And the biggest concern was that the overlay district needed more flexibility. So staff revisited the amendments to allow for more flexibility where it was possible. So the agenda packet shows the areas in the LMO that have been revised, and that contains a document summary and chart. But what I'm going to go through today will show you what the revisions look like through illustrations. Hopefully, we'll give a better view as to what those changes would look like. So to recap, the overlay district will encompass those historic areas that cover the town of Hilton Head. The first area that's shown through illustration is the family compound use that we would like to propose to be introduced into the historic overlay district. This illustration shows one parcel of land that's 1.5 acres for property zone RM6, which is a new zoning that is proposed for this area. This is not a subdivided property, this is one parcel. But as you can see, it has nine homes on that parcel. And what it would require is a nine, excuse me, a 20-foot axis easement of an all-weather driving surface with a five-foot setback that's denoted in red from the easement. If you can look at the bottom of the screen, you'll see how far back the setback is in the red, and the buffer would be a 15-foot buffer on the bottom of the screen that's denoted in green. And this shows what the buffers and setbacks would look like from a minor arterial. The next screen shows a regular subdivision and what is supposed to be the family subdivision. So if you look on the right side of the screen, it shows you that a regular subdivision requires a 40-foot right-of-way and all the infrastructure would need to be put in prior to building, which places a hardship if you're just a landowner that has several people wanting to build a property. So this takes, if you look onto the right side of the family subdivision, it takes the burden of the one person having to develop everything prior to putting in a home. So you can subdivide these homes, and you can put the infrastructure in as the homes are being built. So you can see here that the 40-foot right-of-way has been reduced to 30 feet, and it's only up to the point of development. So again, the RM4's rezoning within the overlay district is proposed to be rezoned to RM6, which requires six dwelling units per acre as opposed to the four. So this illustration shows what this would look like on a one-and-a-half acres. And on the RM4, it shows you where there's six units allowed, but with the RM4, excuse me, the RM6, this would allow two more units to be placed in on the property.
Can I end up for a split second? Sheri, you would like for us to wait until you're finished with any questions?
Sure, yes, please, because what we'll do is we'll go through the roll and ask for questions. And then, once everybody's gone through to say something, we'll go through again for any follow-up questions that you have. So you'll have a couple of opportunities to make comments and ask questions.
I hope I can remember back that far.
I muted her.
Okay, just to continue, here shows you your current setbacks and the setbacks that are proposed for the overlay district, as well as the buffer that's currently shown, and the one that's proposed for the overlay district, and your right-of-way for the current and for proposed overlay. So on your right, it shows you, that, the example shows you the minor arterial, which is currently at 40 feet minimum setback, and this is outlined in red, but it's proposed to be 30 feet within the overlay if you're looking at the illustration on the right. All of the streets, this is not illustrated, but they're currently 40-foot minimum setback or proposed to be reduced to 10 feet. And adjacent use setbacks between the single-family is 20 feet currently, but proposed to be reduced to five feet, and that's shown on the left. So if you look at the left illustration, and on the left of that illustration, you'll see that the family that's adjacent to the single-family that are both adjacent to each other have that five-foot setback. Also, between the single-family and the commercial is 30 feet on the left side, which is current, and that's proposed to be reduced to 20 feet, and you can see that at the top for the commercial uses. And between the single-family and industrial, the setback is 40 feet currently, but proposed to be reduced to 30 feet, and that's shown on the right side. So if you look at the buffers, those are outlined in green. So the example shows the buffers for the minor arterial at the bottom, and it's been proposed to be reduced from 15 or 20 feet to just 15 feet with minimal planning if you're doing a single-family development. Excuse me. The buffer is not required for adjacent life uses, shown on the left side. The 20 or 40, oh, excuse me, the 15 or 20-foot buffer is proposed to be reduced to 15 feet between single-family and commercial, and that's shown on top. And the 30-foot to, 20-foot to 30-foot buffer is proposed to be reduced to 20 feet. Planting and fences would be required between the single-family and industrial uses shown on the left. So the next use that we were looking at is the home occupation. It's the tradition of the native islanders to live and work on their property. So the task force expressed that taking this into consideration is important. And we considered those comments and looked back at providing flexibility for the home occupation within the historic areas. So currently, as you can see, the home occupation is restricted to being within the home and no larger than 25% of the gross floor area. And only the person who's living in the dwelling can have the work in the home occupation. And this currently does not allow an accessory structure or advertisement for the home occupation. So what's proposed within the overlay is proposed to allow an accessory structure that is 25% of the dwelling square unit footage or 25% of the gross floor area within the dwelling unit. And while the uses are not specified, home occupation must be contained within this accessory structure and must not cause a disturbance to the outside. So advertising by sign is proposed to be allowed not to exceed 18 by 24 inches, and that's really spelled out in the attachments you've received. And because the home occupation is within the historic areas and they're run by family, a maximum of three family members is proposed to be allowed for the home occupation. So these are the improvements that, or the revisions that we've made to the LMO amendments for the overlay district. And staff is asking that task force give a recommendation to move the historic overlay district to the LMO committee today. Staff worked to incorporate the recommendations and feedback given by the community and the task force into these amendments that address reductions in buffers, setbacks, and access to allow property owners to build on their property. Compound, family compound relieves the cost burden of having to put in all the infrastructure before building. Family subdivision addresses the tradition of native islanders to give a piece of their property to future generations and allows for infrastructure upgrades, not to fall on the burden of one person, but to fall on the burden of the person who is developing their home currently. Staff is proposing that the regulations allow property owners to live and work on their property as has been done traditionally. And in moving this forward, this could resolve a lot of issues that are coming up in the community. And the sooner that this can be done, the sooner this can be implemented. So the foundation is laid here, and I'm asking that this go forward. This would be another win for the task force if this were to occur today, and that's pretty much all I have. Thank you. Right now, we can have public comment. There's someone waiting to stand by to address the overlay district.
Okay, I'm sorry, you say we have one?
Yes, and I'm going to stop screen sharing, as soon as I stop screen sharing, that person can call in or connect it.
Okay, Sheri, you'll be able to put that back once we finish comments, because I think we want to go back and refer to questions from the beginning of your presentation.
Yes, I can.
Okay, the caller is unmuted.
The caller is unmuted, so if the caller would like to give comment now?
Yes, ma'am, how are you today?
And you have three minutes, I'm doing well, how are you?
I'm well, this is Philip Smith, I'm Oakmarsh Property Owners Association President. We are, we're in favor of most of the regulations. People should be able to use their property as they will for reasonable purposes. We are a little leery of the home occupation issue. Mainly, one of your members right now has been operating illegally, has been cited once, or has been convicted once and cited two more times for running illegal business with noxious odors, dumping loads on property, maintaining trucks and things like that on the property, and it's right in the backyard of people's houses. So we're, we are not against people using their properties in reasonable areas and doing things in reasonable ways. But when things like that are done, we are very much against it, and doing that under a home occupation license makes it even worse. And I know most of the members there, I know Levon very well, I know Palmer well, and he knows what I'm talking about. And that's our comment from Oakmarsh Property Owners Association.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Wright? Joyce Wright?
Yes.
Okay, you need to turn down your, whatever you have in the background, because it's kind of feeding back through the meeting. Are you able to do that?
I did. Can you hear any?
Yes, you're great, thank you, appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
So that's all for public comment. Just the Open Town Hall, again, just fell along the same lines with the home occupation. What you can do, what we can move on to is the discussion order. Mr. Chairman, if you want to go through that discussion order, and you, I think Mr. Theodore is left out of the rotation, so you might want to put that in there. I apologize for that, but you can go ahead.
Okay, I'm not sure that I have the rotation in front of me. So you have to help me with that order, but I will give some opening comments, if I may. That we are continuing our work with the preservation of the culture here on Hilton Head and addressing it through our historic neighborhoods district. Just so that everyone knows that's listening or viewing in, we have some very unique challenges as far as what is here, what has been here for generations, and what has come lately as far as development and establishing even the town. So those challenges continue to come up from time to time, and we have some real concerns about how do we preserve the culture and how do we help people maintain a lifestyle and participate economically so they can stay on the island? And, and this was also addressed and brought up in the consultant's report that we had done some time ago, about a year or so ago now. So that is the basis of what we are working on and the body of work that we are doing. And I want to save the rest of my comments and tell, till the end, I'm not sure what the order is, Dr. DeBose, if you can help us with the order of which we need to comment.
Um, let's see, Mr. Theodore, if you have any comments?
I don't really have any comments, I was noticing, and I was looking it up, Sharice. The five, the five-foot setback, I believe that's the, the minimum setback that fire code allows before you have to start doing special fire-rated construction. So I was trying to understand where that five-foot setback came from, because I had a question that once you start putting structures against the property, you begin to affect the adjacent property and what their abilities are, their rights, and that they would have to go into special construction. But it looks like the five-foot allows homes on either side or structures on either side to be built five feet from the property line. So I kind of answered my own question on that, but I just wanted to point out that's where that five-foot line comes from. And then I was looking at an aerial, and in terms of street setbacks, it looks like a lot of the areas, you know, very few structures on the island get any closer to the street than what is proposed in this chain. So it seems like it tends to be respectful of the, of the setback requirements.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Okay. Ms. McVitty, if you have any comments? You have to unmute.
Yes, yes, I just realized that. I have a couple of, of questions. The first one is, where did we come up with the percentage for the additional density in, in these, in a, in a family compound or? In other words, in other words, in the RM6 zoning, the residential density would be changed from the existing six units per acre up to eight units per acre for properties or at least five acres? And what I'm wondering is, how did we come up with that, that increase? I'm thinking it must be a percentage of what we normally would have.
Asking me how it came up with the RM6?
I want to know how we got to, right, to four, how we got to six and eight dwelling units. There must have been some rationale.
Thank you, Carol, if I might comment. I think the, the numbers came up out of a matter of what was the maximum density where you could still have a feasible kind of construction without it just being totally clustered. I don't recall the math for it as well to answer your question, but I think, you know, out of the past conversations, and we got to what could feasibly be done, given a certain amount of acres, and I think you'll find that it does take for a minimum of a five-acre tract that you can go up to that density. So I think that's how some of that came about. If you had at least a minimum amount of acreage where you could get the proper setbacks and all, then it would be allowed. I don't, I don't think you could get that much if the property is, is a smaller tract. So I think it had to do with a couple of things that got us to that point.
That's absolutely correct. So the way it looks like in the current LMO is under RM4, you get your four dwelling units per acre. So with at least three acres, you get your six units, and then eight dwelling units per acre. That has to come with at least five acres. So when that has to come with at least five acres, um, so when you do the RM six, um, you have to have at least five acres to do the eight dwelling units. And so it's, it's like Palmer just said, you have to have the more property to get the higher density. That's where those numbers came from.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, what, I guess what I'm asking is, um, was, was there some best practices, uh, community or other, um, other development that we borrowed this from, that we said, okay, that works, that looks good, that's what we should go with? Or do we, I, I'm, I'm just confused as to how we came up with that that density.
Yeah, Caroline, if you, if you, if you recall, you know, when we did different surveys and we looked at the density of, of other areas, and I don't, I don't recall which, which properties, I mean, the eight just wasn't a sort of pie in the sky kind of thing, there was some, some consideration for other areas, I think, which, uh, eight units were allowed, I mean, eight was allowed in some, some zoning areas, I just don't basically consider it. I don't recall exactly which those zoning areas were, but I think it allowed for, um, you know, what, what was thought, given the, the, the size of the property. And, and Caroline, I know that still doesn't give you a mathematical or a exact um, definition for your question, but it was through some discussion that where the numbers were created, so and that, you know, I, I mean, that's as much as I can recall as to how we.
Yeah, but, well, Palmer, Palmer, I appreciate you, and, uh, but I, I think we definitely want to hear what, how staff uh, came up with this and what the reasoning and rationale is. I'm sorry, Dr. DeBose, go ahead.
The reason, this is part of the LMO rewrite, so it wasn't just pulled out of the air, um, this is, this is where it came from.
Well, no, I, I, I appreciate that, uh, that it was part of the LMO rewrite, I guess I'm going back even further as to how we came up with, with these particular, these particular numbers, this particular percentage or whatever, when we did the rewrite, and that's what my, that's what my question is, I mean, normally, if I were, if I were preparing to make revisions to an LMO, and I were coming up with an overlay district that was essentially new to my community, I would go to other communities that had that experience, that had an overlay district added, and, uh, what their, their best practices would be in terms of coming up with what the density should be for a given area, and that's, that's all I'm, I'm talking about, I'm talking about um, going back a, a little further and not just, well, this is what the LMO says. I'm trying to find out how we got there, because when I look at, when I look at the, uh, the overhead views, I'm thinking in some places, um, we might be able to add another home. I'm, I'm just throwing that out there, I was just, I guess I was trying to find out where, where we got assistance with this particular rewrite.
Good afternoon, it's Terri Lewis, I'm gonna try to answer your question the best I can, and certainly if I don't, let me know, so when we were doing the LMO rewrite, um, which was adopted in 2014, but started several years before that, we were looking for ways that we could add some flexibility to the RM four zoning district and add some additional density with, under certain parameters, so what we chose, and at that point, what we had looked at and what our consultant had looked at was the best way to do that would be to look at acreages, so if the acreage went up a little bit and we chose um, three acres and five acres, then the density could go up incrementally as well. And so when we looked at creating this RM six district, we looked at something very similar as, you know, to look at the acreage as a way of allowing a little bit more density. Additional density was already being allowed by going from RM four to RM six, and then again, using that same incremental increase based on having a little bit more acreage.
So, so if we're talking about, um, what, one acre or one and a half acres, what are we talking about?
Well, the way that it's written right now is it would get, in the RM six zoning district, you would get six dwelling units per acre, so if you had a one-acre site, you would get six dwelling units.
Okay, so, if I can just interrupt, so that's, that's fine. What if I have one and, and three-quarters acres, is there some kind of percentage? Because chances are that, you know, it's, it's not going to be that exact. Especially based on old, you know, we're talking about old properties here, which weren't necessarily um, hacked up into, into acres, so.
Yes, and absolutely, you get, you get additional density if you have more, so if you have more than one acre, then you potentially get more than six units, we look at the exact density of the property, because generally, there's a survey that's submitted that lets us know the amount of acreage that there is, and then the density is based on that number. So if you have more, one, if you have somewhere between one and two acres, you're going to get more than six units, because the six units is based on having one acre.
Okay, so there will be some way of putting a percentage on that. I'm thinking of a formula, you know, like an algebraic formula, if you can get six on one acres and you have one acre, one and three-quarters acres, how many house, units can you get, I, I'm thinking in that.
It, it's a factor, it's a multiplication factor, six times 1.75.
Yes.
But I guess maybe to add to your question, can you round up, how does it work when you're, when you have a fractional unit, Terri?
Yeah.
So we don't, the, the LMO is very specific, we do not round up for density.
Well, maybe that's something we should consider, since this is an overlay district and it's brand new.
Or like in some instances, if it's 0.5 or greater, you, you round up to a unit, if it's less than, it, then you go to the lower unit number.
Yeah, something like that, I, I'm, since we're at the beginning, um, and we're essentially, we're, we're writing the script, then maybe we should consider this.
Yes, we, we can add that in, we, or, sorry, not add that in, we can add that as a note to look into how that might work.
Okay, I would appreciate that, Levon, did you want to say something else?
No, I just wanted to follow up on some of your questions and stuff, and just to remind us and staff that, uh, in creating this overlay district, we are looking for some flexibility and some creativity, because we have unique situations with unique properties, and some may be 0.8 or 0.9 acres and not quite get to that one acre, and you know, how do we address some of those issues, I appreciate your question.
Okay, I have another question too, and, um, and that is, do we have any idea of how many, if any, families wish to take advantage of these changes, or even potentially?
I don't have a numeric figure of families wanting to take advantage. This is just, this is something we need to, to draft out, and if people opt to take advantage of it, then it's, then it would be there, but no, I don't have a, I don't have a number for that.
Okay, because the reason, the, the reason I, I bring it up is, um, I mean, it seems like a really, it seems like a really good thought and a good, um, a good plan to have a a family subdivision or a family compound. I am just trying to think if, trying to devise whether or not this is something that we feel is indigenous to our, our Hilton Head Island community, uh, to our overlay district, or is this something that that isn't even going to be taken advantage of, or isn't even necessary, I don't, I'm just curious, I, I don't know.
Well, Ms. McGeady, you know, um, this was brought up with the consultant report, and the report was made based on observations by the community, so it would be the hope that, once this is in place, that people would take advantage of it, because it is expressed that this is what was wanted, particularly family subdivision, particularly family compound.
Okay, fine, excellent, thank you, thank you so much. That's the end of my questions for the moment.
Thank you, um, Mr. Abdul Malik, if you have any questions?
Yes, um, I think my initial question had to do with the, the waterfront mixed-use zoning. The chaplain area at the moment, is there any increase in the density for that area that would lay into the, um, that would make it compatible to other waterfront mixed uses throughout the, throughout the island?
You're talking about, you're talking about in terms of density?
Yes, for instance, um, the, the chaplain area, I think it's RM four right now, and I don't know if, you know, if there's been a proposal to look at adjusting the waterfront side of the chaplain area to make that zoning compatible with other zonings in the district and also on the island. I don't, I didn't see that, I mean, I didn't see that, that being addressed, and that, that was a question that came up. There's a question I submitted on my, in my, in my August, uh, fifth recommendations on concern.
Are those rezonings for Marshfront, we didn't talk about taking that to WMU. Um, the density addresses the RM four districts, which are the majority zoning districts in the overlay.
In that one, one particular area, I think that's the area that's being almost completely overlooked in terms of its, um, its capacity and potential, that, that some families can take advantage of. And one of the comments that I had, one of the concerns I had in my last submission was the ability for families to be able to live on their lands, as well as have the use of economic, uh, potential from the land.
Can you be more specific about the economic potential, because, um, do you have more specifics to talk about that?
Okay, so you have, you have waterfront, you have waterfront property in the chaplain area, but in certain sections, the only zoning that they have is RM four. Why would those areas, for those areas, why would those areas not be afforded a waterfront mixed-use zoning? Particularly in the overlay?
Okay, thank you for your comments, Ibrahim, um, the side that you're talking about is zone Marshfront, and they have higher density than the RM four district. So they would be allowed to take advantage of that density.
I think there may be some areas that have been overlooked there, in that, in that particular area. So what we're saying, that if, 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 once, if, once the owner is accepted, if a color native has waterfront property, would it be an easy proposal for him to ask or request that his waterfront property be rezoned from RM four to a mixed-use zone, zoning?
Yes, we, we can't spot zone, um, what that means is that when you can't rezone property, if you have a whole row RM four districts, you can't rezone one piece of property to be Marshfront. So we want to try to avoid doing that, um, you want a whole district that has, uh, the same zoning use. So that's what we're trying to avoid with that.
Okay, I, I heard the terms about zoning.
Yes.
For me, and for me with that in the past, um, and I know that, that, that has been the case in the past, because we, we, my, 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 my mother-in-law and myself had two pieces of property side by side, we requested to have her property zoning changed, and the reason why they said it couldn't be done was because they had, you know, the spot zoning thing was in place, so I guess what I'm, I'm saying is this right here, if you have, we have property on Chaplin, that is zone waterfront mixed use on one side, and waterfront mixed use on the other side, but then there's a segment that's restricted to RM four in the overlay, all the own property, would they not be able to apply for a waterfront mixed use with properties on the side and adjacent to them with that waterfront zoning?
Yes, that wouldn't, the overlay wouldn't address the rezoning issue, uh, at least not particularly the one that you're talking about.
Okay, um, well, I'm, 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 I'm having, I'm, I'm not sure I understand that, because we've already, we've already moved some zoning from RM four to RM six in the overlay. So, I, I, you know, I have an issue with that, and, and, I mean, I guess a concern with that being said, it can't, it can't be addressed inside of the overlay.
Well, your RM four properties would be rezoned to RM six.
Okay, but again, I'm referring to property that has a, a waterfront access, or waterfront, Marshfront, whatever, whatever you want to call it. If they cannot be considered to have a waterfront mixed-use zoning that would be compatible to other waterfront mixed uses that already exist on the island in those, in our neighborhoods.
Okay, I'm trying to get clear on what you're asking, is, are you asking that the, the Marshfront property be rezoned to WMU, is that what you're asking? Because I'm trying to get a handle on, I'm trying to get a handle on what you're asking, so I can provide appropriate.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm asking, I'm, I'm asking that if we have, if we have waterfront property that is RM four, and is restricted to RM four, or maybe it goes up to RM six, but the overlay not address that waterfront property being. but the overlay not address that waterfront property being rezoned to have a waterfront mixed-use zoning.
Asking for your RM4 property to be. Okay.
Because we're trying to, we're still trying to incorporate some of the traditional uses of our property, and not just for residential.
Hello, it's Terry Willis again. I'm going to try to assist here. So the area along, that I believe you're talking about, and certainly let me know if it's not. I believe you said the waterfront area across from Chaplain, along Broad Creek. So that area along 278, and then it curves along Marshland Road as well, is zoned marsh front. So it's not zoned RM4 there, it's zoned marsh front. And along William Hilton Parkway, the density is four dwelling units, unless you have three acres, and then it's eight dwelling units. But along Marshland Road, that same zoning district is six dwelling units, and it increases to 10 dwelling units per acre if you have three acres.
Okay, let me ask, is that, is that related to the family, having three, having three acres for a family compound?
Well, yeah, so if you had three acres, and you wanted to use it as a family compound, and you were in the marsh front zoning district, if you were along Marshland Road, then you would get 10 dwelling units per acre.
Okay.
So I just, what I wanted to make sure that you understood was that we do have a marsh front zoning district. And so across from Chaplain, rather than it being RM4, it's actually, it's called marsh front. It's a separate zoning district that, like I said, goes along William Hilton Parkway, and then along Marshland Road, portions of Marshland Road as well.
Okay. Okay, was, was, is there anything being proposed in the parent recommendation about the dropping or the density rights, you know, property and density being, being, being transferred?
I'm sorry, ask that question again?
The question about the transferring of density rights. For instance, I have a piece of, give an example. I have a piece of property that's zoned 12 units per acre. I don't intend to do 12 units per acre. Can I transfer that density right to another resident of, in the overlay so that they could do more with their property? And, and, you know, we can work out a deal where they can do more with their property than what I intend to do with my density?
Transfer development rights is not addressed in the overlay district. As you recall, it's a part of another recommendation. So that needs to be looked at further down the line, but it's not addressed presently.
Okay. You, you, Ms. DeVos, you made a recommendation in your, in your statements early. What was your recommendation again, please?
Well, just, I recommended that this move on to the LMO committee. That the foundations of the overlay district have been laid out. And in order to take advantage of, for people to start taking advantage of the overlay district, it needs to go through all of the channels. And just asking that for a recommendation to move it forward.
Okay, when you say a recommendation to move it forward, are you suggesting that what you would have, what you presented to us this far right now is the completed package? Or that the, the work that will go into developing the overlay will be continually built?
Not sure I understand the question.
So I guess the question would be, is, what, what's your recommendation in terms of what you want to submit to move forward? Are you suggesting that what we move, what we move, if we move forward on something today, on, on something today, that it is a completed project? Or is it still under development?
That the LMO amendments, the revisions, the construction of the overlay district, proposing all of that move forward.
Does that proposal include future revisions?
You can, you can make revisions in the future. Just because you recommend something to move forward today does not mean that everything is set in stone. You can always make revisions as you go along. But.
Town, town council could decide to adopt that.
I'm sorry?
Town council can make revisions to the LMO. So it's not, just because you recommend it to move forward does not mean everything is set in stone. That there can be revisions made in the future by town council.
Okay, then, so are we saying that the, the overlay then becomes a subset to the LMO?
Not sure what you're, what you mean. The overlay district becomes a part of the, the LMO, yes.
Okay, that's, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons, do you have any comments?
Yes, I think I'm on, I wanted to come, I, I wanted to go back to the family compound and the subdivision that you showed earlier. I, I thought I reckoned it was some inconsistencies in the rights and ways. I think we had 20 for some, 30 for others, 40 in the, the egress. I thought there was, I just saw a bit of inconsistency there, that I thought we might, for the sake of moving this on now, that we try to have a consistent, you know, what the minimum requires. We had.
Okay, I pulled the screen back up.
So we have a 30-foot S for the proposed family subdivision. And what's the next, you can move to your next lot. And I just, I, it's just something I'm trying to recall.
Okay. Asking about family compound?
Yes. Okay, we have, we're showing the family compound with a 20-foot access easement. And I think on the family subdivision, it goes up to 30. Does it do that for a particular reason? This is showing, uh, what is that? Eight, nine units on a family compound with a 20-foot access easement. And I think on the, uh, family subdivision.
Hey, give me a moment, let me, let me check on that.
Good, not a problem.
Okay, so the first one is, um, this hasn't, the family compound has an easement. It, it gives you 20 feet with an all-weather driving surface. So you don't, this is not going to be as wide as your family subdivision, which is a right-of-way that you would have to put in there. So that was, that's going to be larger.
Yeah, so, I mean, why the difference? I mean, I mean, I, I see it as the same basic kind of structure. And, and why would it be a, a right-of-way versus easement between the two? I mean, as a matter of clarity. I mean, you actually, you actually are showing, at least by the display here, you're showing less units in a larger road. And, and I guess because it says right-of-way, why would you, could that somehow be an access easement versus a right-of-way? Because that's 10 feet of property to, in my opinion, to accomplish the same goal.
Okay, so your family compound is one parcel. So you can have the smaller easement to put more units on that property. But with the subdivision, you would need the right-of-way. That's, those are separate, those are separate parcels. So you would need a right-of-way for those separate parcels.
So you're saying because it's a subdivision, and you have each lot is separated out of the, I mean. Yeah, I, I understand the rationale for, for doing it. I'm just saying, could it not be done on a 20-foot access, access easement? Oh, could that not be reduced to 20 feet versus 30?
I'm going to let Terry answer that question. It's the LMO official.
Okay.
So we modeled this for the subdivision. We were looking to add some flexibility, but we modeled it after what we're proposing as part of the dirt road paving amendments. And in talking with our engineering staff, the right-of-way, the, typically for anything over five, it would potentially go up to 40 or fif, a requirement of a 40-foot or a 50-foot right-of-way. And we've worked with them, and they believe that a 30-foot right-of-way is the, the least amount that, that would, that would work subdivisions to be able to also incorporate whatever needs to go into that right-of-way as well. So potentially drainage, other infrastructure. So like I said, we modeled it after what we're going to be proposing as part of the dirt road paving amendments. And 30-foot, a 30-foot right-of-way was the, the minimum that we felt we could go to.
So, so you don't have the same requirements for a family compound?
That's correct. So for a family compound, it's a little bit different, like Sharice said, because you're talking about everything still being on one parcel. You're not subdividing those parcels out.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't, you know, and I understand it, but I don't, I still see where you're using additional area of family compound would have to have the same, the same infrastructure. Is, is the infrastructure, the infrastructure won't be different for a family compound, would it?
There's just a little bit more flexibility when it's all occurring on one parcel. You have a little bit more flexibility about how that infrastructure can occur versus when you're subdividing lots.
I know, but, and, and I guess my point is, even though we're talking about trying to accommodate the historic neighborhoods, I mean, we're still talking about the very same issue that causes difficulties. You know, I, I, I would, I would feel a lot better about the family subdivision having the same 20-foot easement, because I, I don't see that you're not going to have the same infrastructure in the compound versus the subdivision. Even though you're having individual separate lots, the infrastructure, the drainage and all, still going to be pretty much and relatively the same. Maybe Todd can, and it can help me out if I'm, unless I'm this far to the left. I think you're still talking the same, and you could get better usage of the land. I mean, it's, it's, it gets back to one of the, the issues that we face when you're trying to best utilize your land. With the, this, this speaks to one of those stringent rules where you, you, you put your land in a, in a, in a right-of-way, 30 feet versus an access easement of 10, of 20 feet. And I, I'm, I'm contending that the infrastructure is relatively the same for either one.
Yeah, so it, it still does come down to the, the difference between being on one parcel and not being, and being subdivided. So when you look at a family compound, and all of those parcels, or all of those homes are accessed off of the, the road that's going into that family compound. Once you subdivide, then your lots need to have access, anything more than, the way it's written right now is anything more than five, so six or more, have to have access to a road that meets specific specifications. So a right-of-way in this case.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I thought the ultimate goal, but, but, you know, if a fire truck can get down a 20-foot easement on a family compound, can it not get down the same 20-foot access easement on a family subdivision? I mean, I think the fire safety was the ultimate goal for, for road size. You know, just in, in my opinion.
I mean, we can certainly look at it a little bit further.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I, I think it's, it's, you know, you're talking about 10 feet on the size of a property, and it may be minimal at this. But it's still, it's just, still points to one of those degree of difficulties you have to overcome when it comes to land. You still, you, you have to give up that much right-of-way. But, you know, and my next point was the 30-feet, the 30-foot buffer setback on the front. I guess it would be the front, because the sides, you have a five-foot, like the red lines are other buffers. And was it 30-feet buffer on the front of the property?
So your red lines are your setbacks, and your buffer is the green. What is your question?
The 30-foot setback to the front of the property?
Yes.
That's still, that, in my mind, once again, that's still a lot. You know, we're not talking about a major road, and I know that's down from, that's down from what it was. And I, I'm not sure where we draw the line on all of the things that's, it would, would meet, you know, for safety and all, whether you went from, you know. My, my thinking or my thought is, if that, if, if the 30 was 20, you once again get some better usage of your property. And I'd have to look at, and I also want to consider the safety factors. I think that would be the key element, if you went from 20 to 30, if I must say so myself. But, you know, once again, 30 feet carved out, it's still, once again, a lot of, a, a good bit of property as you can move and shift to, to get a better development.
Okay, thank, thank you. We can take a look at that. But again, as you said before, trying to move that any closer, it becomes a, an issue about safety. So we want to consider that when trying to shift buffers and setbacks. And that's for your benefit as well as your neighbor's benefit. So you don't want to reduce it too much.
Yeah, well, I mean, the only thing, yeah, the only thing Sharice is, I mean, you, you have five on the side, where you would probably have neighbors to be considered, or adjacent properties to be considered.
All right.
You know, the front, the front.
Five is on each side.
Yeah, the front, the front is on each side. So therefore, you know, I'm talking about where it shows the major, the minor arterial. Where's the minor arterial? It's the road there. And most subdivisions or developments, you know, I mean, when you talk about safety and, and, uh, and just privacy, there's usually some fencing, you know, around the development itself. So that's why I said, I, I'm just, I'm, I'm talking about usable land area is what, is, is, is my, my aim here.
Okay, thank you. I, I get it.
All right, and the next, one, and my last one, if I still have a minute. The, the home occupancy license, I think you said something about have to be limited to like three members? I'm not sure I understood what that was all about.
Okay, so under regular home occupation regulations, only the person who lives on the property can operate the home occupation. Because when we're talking about home occupation within the historic areas and then you have family members who work in the home occupation, we don't, you don't want to make it to a full-scale commercial area, but it all, but it takes consideration for the fact that you have family members working there. So basically not more than three members of the family can participate in that home occupation, which is more than what is in the current home occupation, which only allows for one.
I'm sorry, I was muted there for a moment, but, and you're talking mainly inside of the home.
In the overlay district, it's proposed to allow an accessory structure that's 75% of your dwelling unit. And in the regular home occupation section, you can't have an accessory structure. It just has to be within the dwelling unit. So this one will allow for, will allow for, for you to put up an additional structure.
Okay, so in other words, you could put a small little workhouse station on this, on the site is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, and you can, but the, my point is in that, and, and the, this would allow at least three family members to be able to work within that structure, wherever it may be.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Okay. And the historic neighborhoods are being, is designed by, by, how, how do we, what is the final description? Where do we get the final description for our neighborhoods? It's, I know we have our signs up to show the, our designated communities, but the landmass is, is done by what, what measure?
I believe, and somebody can correct me because this happened before I got here, but I believe that those areas were designated officially and just, they're designated officially. So those areas that, yeah.
Okay, okay, sure, that's, that's good. I'm, I, I think I've got my question as at least, you know, I think this, hopefully we'll give a little more food for thought on those areas where we can obtain the, the best land areas to, to be developed. I mean, that's mainly, you know, need that little more flexibility and more land area usage by my comments is what, what my goal was behind those. Thank you.
And just for your future, well, for your reference, these are the areas that are designated as the, as the.
Right, okay, all right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Sharice, thank you.
One more thing, Palmer, Nipka is the one who identified those areas. Again, this is before I, I came on, so I was fumbling kind of through that. But Nipka is the one who identified those areas as historic. So hopefully that, that helps you get the reference.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I mean, I, I just want to make sure that when this final area is done, that we have covered, you know, as close to exact, you know, the actual historic neighborhoods. And we, we, we get everyone covered and protected as best we can for potential future use.
Yes, it'll, it'll be exact when we do the GIS mapping for it.
All right, okay, all right.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, it's up, you're up. Sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Wright, I skipped Ms. Wright. Then, Mr. Chairman, if you want to just round it off, but let's get to Ms. Wright first.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I would like to address, I just have one question, but I want to comment on my colleagues for asking so many great questions that involve where Ms. DuBois wanted us to possibly come to some conclusion on this today. But I definitely want to ask one question for clarity. And that clarity for me would be a question. I know that we discussed it, it was something that Palmer just asked at the very end about the occupational for the families. So would that be per household or per compound that you have three individuals? Would be my question on that. When you said that you can have three people, is that coming out of one household or is that coming out of the compound?
That's within the, the definition of family that's specified in the, as a part of the overlay district. So they can be related, but not necessarily out of the same house. Remember, we're, we're extended family.
Correct.
So that would encompass this extended family.
So then what you're saying is that would come out of the compound? It would not come out at an individual home? So if you had six homes that was in the compound, then you would only have three people that are, has the ability to work from home out of that compound?
Um, okay, so I think I understand your question. So if you're in a compound and each person in a compound has a home occupation, then that home occupation would allow for those three members to be in family. But you know, if you're talking about a single home occupation, then that, the three family members would relate to that.
Um, I'm not clear on, could you repeat that? I'm not.
So within a family compound, if you have multiple people who are working out of the, who have a home occupation, like each person in that compound has a home occupation.
Yes.
So if you have three units that have a home occupation, then the three people, it, it goes by house or it goes by home occupation. It doesn't go by, go by the, the compound as a whole. It goes by the, the actual home occupation.
Okay. So, so just for clarity for myself, then you can have a multitude of occupations working out of a compound setting?
It's written right now, you can.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is it, am I up?
You are up.
Thank you. Um, I do appreciate my colleagues and again, taking interest in the questions that we have. I have a, a few questions myself and some comments as well. Um, I think that what I understood earlier that was being asked was about the waterfront mixed-use zoning. Can you refresh me, Dr. DeBose, on what that, what the, what the units per acreage is there?
Give me a moment to pull that up.
And while you're looking for that, I will continue with some of my other comments that I think that we are certainly continuing to find questions with, with the overlay district and how do we address what we stated in our mission and our vision, which is to help preserve the Gullah culture on the island. I believe there is some concern as well as to how we do that and also protect the interests of native islanders in particular. But also there will be people who live in these neighborhoods who may not necessarily be a part of the culture. Uh, I'm not sure how we address that, but I do think it is a question that needs to be asked to, as I've heard in the past, to make sure that we're not fattening up the frogs or snakes to come in and take advantage of our neighborhoods, as has already been happening throughout the years. Where we find that we have certain challenges because of our resources to do developments and architects and things that folks do when they come in to develop a property, you know, we may have some limitations with that. And that is a concern for me is how we address that. The other part of the question, while you're doing that, I don't know if you can do three things at once. I tend to have to do that myself, but, Dr. DeBose, are we testing these recommendations in the historic overlay district? Are we using real data? Are we using some properties here on the island in our historic neighborhoods? Or is this just something we're kind of coming up with from maybe other communities or some other patent laws? I, I just continue to emphasize that our properties, a lot of times on the island, are unique in a lot of ways. So I think that the, someone asked a question before about how many people are trying to take advantage of this. Surely there had, must have been people who have come through your office that we could use to test some of these things that we're trying to do in historic overlay district to make sure that what we're doing is going to address some of those issues. I'll stop right there and let you catch your breath.
Okay, so just your last question. We have done test case studies on particular parcels and particular areas, trying to see if we can get the most, how we can get the most density out of the particularly small and irregularly shaped parcels. So that has been tested. Um, also, a lot of these, the, these recommendations that have come up have been based on the fact that people come in and they have particular issues that address land use that we take into consideration when using these things, these, these regulations. So it's not pulled out of thin air. We certainly appreciate the uniqueness of property that's within the area. But a lot of these recommendations are based on the experience that has come through this office. And to answer your other question about the, the dwelling units per acre for WMU, that's 16 dwelling units per acre for residential property.
And that is throughout the Chaplain area as well? Because I think there was some concern that there might have been some areas that was still RM4 and were not included in, in the areas that would zone, that would upzone from RM4 to RM6.
I, I would have to look at those areas in particular. I don't have that map in front of me right now. So that would be something I would have to look at closer.
Yeah, it's my understanding from input that I've received that the Chaplain area is still some of the lowest zoning even in the historically, historic neighborhoods. If some have moved up to RM6 and some have not. But also the ability to use or change that to mixed use might also be valuable to a lot of property owners as well. Which is, again, I hate to sound like a broken record, but I know we need to be creative and certainly continue to find some flexibility in what we're trying to do. From what I can understand, the concern is that we don't put something in place that is hard and fast and we have to try to live with it. I know we can't fix everything here today, so I'm hoping that we can make some progress. But I do want to have some understanding about what we are trying to accomplish and how we're, how we're getting there. The, the properties that you have used to test the overlay district and some of the other things that may have come through your office, as I've mentioned before, I think would be good material for case studies. And if there's some way we can write that out and maybe share that with the task force in some way, it may help us as far as understanding the work that you and staff are doing. And it may address some of the questions that we're asking to expedite the whole process. And I think it would also give us some confidence that this data is being tested in our own neighborhoods, so that we have an understanding of what we can and what we cannot do. I'm also concerned about the, the home occupation and some of the language that has been used in there that may, it, it just concerns me. And I, I know that there are certain challenges that we have with certain home occupations and businesses and things, but this is also considered to be a way of life by native islanders in particular. And that language seems to really not only limit what we can do in the future, but it also seems to put a lot of folks who are already in existence in a bad place. Uh, I know we have had that experience already and we have some, some challenges in our community. And I appreciate Phil Smith calling in earlier and understanding that people in our community know that, yeah, we try, have to try to figure out a way forward to, to coexist with some of the challenges that we have with the way folks have been doing things. And then with development that has been placed on the island. And that is where the new developments come. And then there's a, a challenge or an issue with folks and properties who have already been here for a number of generations. That to me really might need to look at how that language is drafted.
Can I ask for, I'm sorry, can I ask for some specific examples as to how the home occupation section is restrictive? Because in overlay district, you're allowed more than you are in outside of those areas. So what are those challenges that are, that are being presented that staff can look at closer?
Um, well, I mean, I think that's, that's a good question. And I'm hoping that you and staff had already had some folks to come in with some issues. And I know we've had, the, the issue has already been addressed with, with our own Palmer Simmons and operating his business and how it might be, well, has already been identified as being a, a problem. So those are the kinds of things. And what I saw in the public comment when it comes to things like the noise level and how we measure that and how we enforce that. Well, that, that's one for sure. There have been others that have been brought to my attention over the years with folks who operated, for example, a garage where they repair or work on cars, how that might be considered a disturbance to a neighbor.
Ilva?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to have to check out, I've got a meeting I'm going to have to go to.
Uh, I would be happy to allow some of my time to you if you have some other questions or comments you'd like to make before you have to go.
No, the only, and, and this might not relate at all. And I'm not going to be able to stick around for the answer. I just, I was just kind of curious that once this affordable housing use is defined, does that somehow interface with? once this affordable housing use is defined, does that somehow interface with these areas as well? And I guess that's the part I'm kind of a little confused on is, you know, how does all, because I think that allows at some point up to 20 some units to the acre, depending on the incentive, just how all that kind of fits into the, the big picture.
Is that for, that's for Dr. DeBose or that for me?
That's for the town. It's a little complicated, so I was just kind of curious of how that ties into this as well.
Well, the way it's proposed now for the overlay district is that people who are in the overlay district can take advantage of what comes with workforce housing as well as what comes with the overlay district.
Now, if, if Mr. Theodore leaves the meeting, Dr. DeBose, do we still have a quorum?
We do. Yes.
All right, I've gotta run.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, everybody. Good questions.
Thank you, Mr. Theodore.
I have just a couple of other things I think I wanted to, to mention here and it's based on some of the previous comments. Again, I think we're looking at how we use the land as well as the formulas of how we got there. And I know that question was asked earlier too. So I, I, I feel like we, we, we still have a lot of questions. We want to make some progress. We need to make some progress. But I, I think there's still a, a lot of questions and I'm not sure if we've kind of reached that happy place where we can feel like what we put forward will address a lot of the concerns that we've had from this meeting and previous meetings as well. So I, I appreciate the fact that you have some other staff in, in the room to help give you some support. But I do think that it may be also worth considering having some legal representation. I know that with our consultants, we considered in phase two that we might need to reach out to other resources to help us draft from the legal language. I feel like, as I recall, that staff had mentioned that we have attorneys on staff that can do that as well. But I do know that in our consultant's report, we considered also a phase two and considering reaching out to some other resources if, if need be. I would certainly ask that we consider that as well. So I think in a lot of cases, what we're after is certainly, again, not just the, the numbers as such as they are, but also the, the way we use our properties. And some of those may have particular challenges and I would certainly be interested in seeing some of that information as to the process of how staff arrives at some of these decisions that we've, we've come through, even in trying to move this historic overlay district forward. Let's see here. I think I, maybe to the end of my notes. Oh, I have a couple of those. Now, it's, I have to ask the question again. Now, was the consultant's report adopted by the town? I think we had come to that decision last time, didn't we?
The consultant's report has been adopted by the town as well as the framework, as well as that, everything that the consultant has put forward has been adopted by the town. What needs to happen is that the watermark needs to be taken off so it can be put on to the town website, but that's been officially adopted.
Okay, so that will eventually be on our website?
Well.
And let's see. Also, we had mentioned before that I think that it's important that we put a moratorium on some of the citations that may occur for properties that may not conform to the town's present LMO and also what we're proposing in our overlay district so that we don't continue running into challenges and violations as we try to work through something that will help a lot of folks with how they use their property. Is that something that we've considered?
That's actually out of the purview of the task force in terms of issuing moratorium. And this is all in my reason why these, the recommendations for the overlay district need to move forward is so that the people who are being cited can be brought into compliance based on, on, on these proposals.
Yeah, I'm not asking that the task force create those moratoriums. I'm asking that the town do that. I'm sorry, was there someone else that was?
Yeah, this is, this is Ibrahim. And I do have a question. I guess, I guess this question would be directed to Dr. DeBose. We're going to design guides for the district itself. At what point will something like the, the recommendation have us, you know, certain design guides that were, you know, compatible with the historic girl of culture? At what point does that become a part of this overlay?
The design guide was a separate recommendation and it was not listed or identified as top priority by the task force. What needs to happen is that we gotta focus on getting the overlay to the point where that goes through. And in the future, look at what the design guide looks like, but that's a separate recommendation.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I think I'm prepared to make my recommendation.
Okay, please go ahead.
That recommendation would be that we, that we accept the overlay in whatever language we need to create so that the overlay becomes a subset of the LMO. But with the understanding that what we submit, that the, the most recent submission that we make is not a completed work. That the work has to, and the overlay work has to continue to be built based on actual case study and the legal support to help build the language that was recommended from the consultant. I don't know how to say this simpler than that.
Okay. Are you considering this to be a motion?
I would like that to be considered as a motion. Yes, sir. If that's gonna help with getting some things done, then I would like to consider it as a motion.
Let, let me, let me go back. Dr. DeBose, where are we in our procedure? I'm sorry, is that Jennifer?
Hello, Mr. Steves. It is Jennifer Ray for the record. I just wanted to clarify Ibrahim's motion. When you say legal support, we have had legal support. Our attorney, staff attorney, town attorney has reviewed this and the language is consistent with the LMO language. So we're not, at this point, intending to hire a consultant for that. And then the case study work, I just want to clarify because the next step is moving it to the LMO Committee of Planning Commission. Then it would go to the full planning commission. It would go to the Public Planning Committee of Town Council and then to Town Council for two readings when adopted. Talking about being able to make changes and it not being completed, it would be a completed document at this point. And in the future, if there was something that the community or the task force or staff or council said, hey, it'd be great if we would have included this or this issue's come up. We do LMO amendments every year and they could, it could be included in that or it could be a separate set of LMO amendments. But it would be complete as it stands at that point and members of the community would be able to start using it, taking advantage of those changes until there was another amendment at some point in the future. So it's not just gonna be this open-ended running document. There has to be a point that we say, this is what we're comfortable moving forward at this point so that people can start using it and good work can be happening in our community. And in the future, if there's more that we want to do, then we do that at another point. Does that make sense, Ibrahim? It's not, like, there can't just be this open-ended, you know, there has to be a point that we say, these are good for what we're doing now. Let's move it forward. And then if there's something else later or we pause to figure out what that later is, just knowing that there are people that we know waiting to do stuff that are holding on because they know this is in the works. And when it's adopted, they're hoping, you know, to be able to take advantage of it. So there's a little bit of play there and clarification we need before you move forward with a motion as made.
Okay, I think I have a few people that are raising their hands, but I want to go back to Ibrahim first. I can tell you that I'm not sure that I'm comfortable with, with that. Ibrahim, did that answer your question or address your motion?
You know, I guess what I meant, you know, when I talk about having an outside legal assistance, the, you, you, I mean, I guess the thing I'm concerned with is the fact that, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a layperson trying to figure out how to, how to navigate something that's gonna protect the community in every aspect before we, you know, pin something down that's not gonna address our needs. So that's, that's why I keep deferring to having a, a legal person that's helping us draft language that will get us to where we want to go and we all feel comfortable with it. Because I'm really not, you know, I'm not skilled enough to take us there.
Sure, and I appreciate that. I would just add that I'm not sure an outside legal consultant will necessarily get us where we need to go. I think having staff, experts, planners and our hired town attorney will get us where we need to go if we understand what it is that you want. Because right now, what Sharice has been leading our team through is doing the overlay based on the input from the community through the consultant's report, the input from the task force, some creative ideas, some flexibility that we've come up with in addition to what y'all have talked about and put together something that we believe will make a huge impact for the historic neighborhoods. If there is something in here that is going to be harmful, if there's something in here that's going opposite from the way you want to go, then we need to know that so that we can go back and study it. But if there's not something specific, then I don't know what homework Sharice and our team still have to do. Do you see what I'm saying? Like, if, if it's, gosh, we wish we had X, Y, or Z, then we can go and look at that and come back to you with a response to that.
Okay, well, you know, we, I presented something earlier today about the waterfront mixed use in Chaplain.
Right.
That it was restricted to four units per acre if you didn't have five acres or more. And again, the way, the way the native island lands have been so parcelled out, trying to get five units together in order to have an increased density, that's next to near impossible. But if a person has, I don't know, two acres, three acres in that area and it, and it has the same approximation of a property right adjacent to it, as it stands right now, that person would have, if we, if we agreed to this today, that person would have to wait a whole year in order to potentially have his own increase.
Well, and I want this to move forward as much as anybody. And Sharice and I were able to talk about this this morning and agreed that we don't want this meeting to end without knowing either that it was moving forward or what, you know, our to-do list would be. I think this question about WMU is big enough that we need to bring back to you some maps. I can tell you that the thought of WMU or RM4 going straight to WMU is probably not gonna happen because it's RM4 because of the infrastructure, the size, the surroundings. There are things that go into setting up the zoning classifications and the density. So that's an awfully big stretch to go from RM4 to WMU if the whole area is WMU. But I'd like us to have a chance to pull out the map, make sure we're looking at the same area that you're looking at, see what it is. Because I think we're also mixing up the words in terms of waterfront mixed use as a zoning classification or marshfront district as a zoning classification and waterfront or marshfront as a geographical location on the ground. So I think there's some twisting going on there. So I think we need to look at some maps and be able to come back to you. If we can commit to having a meeting pretty soon, then we can show you that and try to make sure that we're all on the same page, understanding what the proposal is and which direction you might want to recommend going.
Okay, what I would like to suggest along those same lines is that, yes, if, if maybe one of the town's attorneys could be available for us and give us some education and if we have questions, that we can ask that question directly and so we're not going back and forth asking a question. If we go back in the room and come back and we do the same thing over and over again and it does feel like maybe we're making some progress, but we're really not. And also, that the historic overlay district, if there are some case studies, again, I think we, they would be helpful and educational to us to know why they work or why they don't work. That would help us ask more intelligent questions. And I agree with Ibrahim. I certainly don't have the expertise of a legal mind or a land use consultant to make sure that I'm answering the question the right way. I do know that what I hear from the community and from my colleagues on the task force is that, yes, we do still have quite a few questions. And I'm, I'm concerned about putting something in place today that we're not going to be comfortable with. I'm sorry, I want to recognize Ms. McVitty. She's had her hand up for a minute here.
Yeah, somewhere in this, I would like us to address those fractions of, of acreage because it's not really addressed here. And we were talking about either rounding it up or rounding it down, but I think most of the properties or vast majority of the properties probably don't fall within exact one, two, three, four, five acres. And so I would like some language to address that. So I'm just saying that I, that's one of my concerns moving forward. But I'm, I'm happy to.
Yeah, that's, that's how it is today already. Almost no property that comes in for a development plan review is one acre, two acre. Everything is, you know, fractions, almost an acre, just over an acre, something. And, and there, it's, it's simple math. If I had my calculator, you know, I would, I would do it. But we'll make sure that that's clear to explain, you know.
Yes, because, because it's, it's not clear to me that, oh, that's what we do. So I'm just, I'm just asking for that clarification. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, and I'd also like more clarification on why we can't go from like an RM4 to waterfront mixed use or whatever that language is and if there's, whatever that rationale is. Because again, with the overlay district, I think we're trying to be creative and I do appreciate staff trying to do that. But again, the education piece is important for us to understand as we try to explain this to the community and as you try to explain. as we try to explain this to the community and as you try to explain to residents why they can't do what they can do with their properties, and why we can't go from that particular zoning to something else, and if that's an extreme, why can't we? You know, if it's something that's be considered an overlay district. I understand that, you know...
We'll make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fair, Levon. We'll make sure that we explain the rationale behind that when we come back at your next meeting with the maps and things to explain that. I hope you noticed today that Sharice had worked with Shay on those images and being able to communicate it graphically. I think that made a big difference, because we know, like, we're planners, we do this all the time, and we know that the task force isn't, but you are boots on the ground, and so together, we're, you know, working these out. So I have the formulas with the fractions of the acreage, seeing if our town attorney can be available, and the WMU, RM4, marshfront discussion as the three big things. Sharice, did you have anything else? Right, so those are the three big things, that if we can talk about those at a meeting here in a couple weeks, as quick as we can get back on the agenda, then it sounds like we would be ready to move on to the LMO Committee and then to Planning Commission. And let me tell you, like, one of the reasons why this is keeping us up at night, trying to get this schedule pinned down, is when it goes to Planning Commission, we have to send out, we have to have thirty days' public notice, that means an ad in the paper way in advance. We have to mail, we're guessing this might be eight to ten thousand mailings or more. That's a lot of just production and getting it out there in the community for people to have a chance to understand what's going on, and then all the questions that'll come back into staff, and we can't do that until we have a date for that meeting, so we need to start planning a step or two ahead, and we don't wanna rush it, so we're trying to be real patient, but we also know that, like I said, there are a lot of people that Sharice has talked to that have something that they wanna do that, you know, they're hoping, and we've been saying, oh, hopefully by the end of the year, hopefully by, you know, this point, a town council could have something adopted so that your community could start using this, so that we could start seeing, you know, how it's impacting folks being able to preserve the culture and use the property in a historical way and have some more economic benefit, and all those good things, you know, all the reason why we've been doing this. So if there's a part that's bad, I'd rather pull that out, let it sit aside, and move the good stuff along, and then pick back up as a Phase Two, you know, if there's something that's giving you a lot of heartburn besides these, you know, few issues that we can talk about in a week or two.
Okay, and also...
Let me just ask one question if I have clarity. And you're saying that we cannot simply propose that planning commission accepts the overlay, and then Phase Two would be development of the languages required?
Well, we've already, the consultant already recommended an overlay, and the task force agreed, and town council agreed, so that's already been adopted. We've already kinda done that early, should we do an overlay or not phase. Now we're to the point of how does it work? What's the language so that it can be in the LMO so people can start actually using it? And y'all agreed, and town council agreed with you, that this was the top priority, the thing to, you know, move the ball on, because it was gonna have the biggest impact in our community, and so that's why we're pressing to move this one forward, but conceptually, it's already been given a thumbs up. Yeah, we like the idea of an overlay. Now we're like, what does that actually mean? What is the language? It should include buffers and setbacks. Well, what does that mean? They should be reduced from this to this, or, you know, what kind of flexibility could we work in? That's the point that we're at right now, is hammering out that specific language.
Okay, let me, I'm sorry, let me just say this as well, so we can kinda move this along as well, because it doesn't seem like we're going to be able to approve anything today. But I'd also encourage us, I know we've been in a pandemic, but it's been a while since we've had like an opportunity to have community input from some of the things that we're doing now. I think that would be helpful. And for the record, again, I want to request that whoever that entity is, consider putting in place a moratorium on citations and violations until we can get to a point where people can be in compliance with what we're trying to do. I'm sorry, Palmer, did you have something?
Yeah, quickly, I just like, definitely the graphs that Sharice presented earlier today were very informative. A bit more work on the graphs, if you had some footnotes, so that we could follow along versus just the narration would be good if they had some footnotes. And definitely, I think we're pressed to wanna present something so that the community can move forward, but as we press forward, I press forward with caution, because, you know, the process, once it's been adopted, the process to add or take away is far more arduous than a few more days to wait and get a document that we are more satisfied with. So, I mean, you know, as much as we are pressed and would love to see something enacted, I think we are doing ourselves much justice by, you know, pressing on cautiously to get as much as we can agree to now versus trying to add on later. So, you know, with that in mind, I think we had some good comments today, and I would hope that some of the comments that were made today will find its way into some easy changes or some relative changes as we move forward, and maybe when we meet again in a week or so, we can get this thing done. There's no action. I'm gonna ask to be excused now, and I'm gonna leave myself since there's no vote, and I wish everybody to be safe, and hopefully I'll be here for the meeting next time.
Thank you. Okay, are we at a good place here now, Dr. DeBose, as far as the meeting is concerned or what we've learned today?
We've presented what we have. We have questions that we need to go back and answer, and at that point, at this point, if there's no action that's gonna be taken today, we don't have anything else on the agenda.
All right, I would encourage you and staff sometime between now and the next meeting that if you need me or any other individual on the task force to reach out, then we can hopefully be a part of helping you expedite your efforts. Again, with this pandemic and this virtual meeting format, it's a little challenging. I know I can still come down there if I wear a mask, but I'm happy to have myself or anybody else participate so that we can maybe address some of these things before we just throw another meeting together, and hopefully we can get this done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any of my other task force colleagues have any other questions or comments? Okay, great, and I want to thank the public for joining in, and we appreciate the staff and the support, and thank you, Dr. DeBose, for the work that you're doing, and I feel like we are looking at some progress, and hopefully we're right at the point of being able to make more progress as well. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion that we adjourn?
Well, I guess we don't really have a quorum, to be...
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you. We will consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you all for your participation.
Thank you.